Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order, our board business meeting of September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Well, we would like for you to stand to salute the flag. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Kaufman.
Ms. Hoff.
Present.
Mr. Wright. Ms. Richardson. Ms. Hopkins.
Uh, she's not here, because of the budget here.
Mr. Tom.
Present.
Mr. Callahan, here. Ms. Cook Henry.
Present.
Ms. Five, three, eight, five, one, Ms. Perkins.
Present. Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. So, comments and answers from board president, first and foremost, welcome back, everybody, our opening of our school year for September two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we're off to a great start. Uh, we had some hiccups in the beginning. Um, a few things that we're working on, and we appreciate everyone's patience. One of our biggest hiccups that we received was busing, so we're definitely still working on that. Uh, we've been trying to handle complaints as they come in, um, so bear with us, but, um, if you have any comments, questions, or concerns, we are trying to make sure we direct people in the right areas. Uh, with that being said, um, I had the opportunity to go to the Alden Cowen, uh, wel- welcoming of teachers. Um, it was an awesome opportunity. I had, um, Ms. uh, Donae, Dr. uh, Dr. uh, Donae Watson-Bully, and then also Jennifer Sapuni, the principals there, they welcomed me. I had an opportunity to talk to, uh, the new teachers and also the returning teachers, and just inspire and motivate them. Um, their goal this year, or I would say their theme is a champion, and that's what they're going off of this year. They believe that everyone is a champion, their teachers are champions, and they play music, uh, this song called Champions for their teachers every day, um, and also for their students, to get their students to understand that they are champions as well. So that was an awesome opportunity. Also, I had the opportunity to go to several different back-to-school nights, which was awesome. They were very well attended. Um, we had, we had a lot of parents that showed out, a lot of students that came out as well with their parents, which was really, really good. Uh, this year, our board of directors, which they also did last year, had the opportunity to come out and go to a lot of back-to-school nights. Um, they may talk about it later on today, you may hear, um, during, um, our comments at the end, but every board director had the opportunity to get out and be a part, and also, um, tell the community and also, um, students who they were. So it was a good thing. I wanna just tell parents that really, really advocate for your child, ask questions as much as possible to the teachers. Also, make sure that you get involved with programs. I've seen a lot of principals giving out pamphlets to show what programs that we do offer. A lot of times, programs are missed or not filled because parents are not involved in them or don't know. Also, please get involved with the home and school. Our numbers were very short last year. We wanted to try to increase our membership as much as possible. Um, at the high school, it's only five dollars to join, uh, the home and school, so I just want, every school has a home and school set up. Some schools are trying to develop their home and school, so please get involved, um, if you wanna be a part of that as well. Um, also, to our students at the high school and middle school, I just wanna say thank you very much for your participation in Friday Night Lights. Um, you know, this is something, our football team is very important to us, our cheerleading, um, team is very important to us. I wanted to just say, please continue to do the right things when it's time to be let out of Friday Night Lights. Uh, we had some issues, um, prior to this. We had a safety assembly, uh, this past week, which went very, very well. Uh, we are bringing our, uh, police in, so our police can get to know our students, and our students can ask questions to make it more of a friendly environment. So we wanna continue to push with that, but also, Friday Night Lights, we wanted to stay. And, um, if our students can't control themselves during the let-out, it causes difficulties in our communities, uh, for our residents. So we want a peaceful environment. We want everyone to, uh, leave after the Friday Night Lights and go home peacefully, and everybody, you know, don't cause violence. You know, that's the biggest thing. Don't cause violence, because you have to remember, we are a school district, so when we have to outsource and get more security, we have to spend more money, which takes away from our students. So ultimately, we wanna make sure that we are creating a safe environment for you guys, and also, when you look good, you feel good. We have a new facility. We wanna keep, keep, um, our students involved in it, and also, a biggest thing is, we want our students to be recruited. And recruiters won't come out to, um, schools. They, they second-guess coming out to schools that have a high violence area or high crime rate. So you wanna make sure that you're showing, um, and be, being the best student you possibly can be, so our students and recruiters will be able to come out and support our children and, um, recruit our athletes. So that is my report, um, for today. Thank you very much. Turn the meeting over to Dr. B. Coles.
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, I welcome all of those who are here in person, as well as those who are joining us, uh, remotely. Uh, this evening, I do have a few items that I would like to update our community on. Um, I'm gonna talk with some special sites, and then follow up with, um, announcements. Uh, I wanna thank all of those teachers listed here, uh, at the various schools who have, uh, indicated that there was a need to fund various projects. You can see at the end of schools, and the number of projects that have been funded by donors choose, so I do wanna say thank you very much for your efforts. We were able to get funding, uh, in, in total of more than eighty-five hundred dollars, so that's great, and, uh, continue your efforts in that regard. Um, next, I want to say a special thanks to the Mid-Atlantic Company. Uh, we partnered with them, or are partnering with them, to, uh, develop the athletic complex that, um, my board president recently spoke about. And during this process, we were able to afford, uh, four students an internship opportunity. Uh, students did go through an application process and interview process, and, uh, we are pleased that these four students did complete the internship project, and would just like to share some of this information with you, and you can hear it directly from the students. Bear with me for one second. I'm not sure. I do not have sound. Was tested earlier. We don't have sound. I'm going to continue until the staff can figure out what's happening with the center.
Just have to share your audio on Zoom.
I did that. That box is checked. I can show you. You can see what I'm doing here. Just reach your sound boxes check. Are our speakers on? Bear with us for one second, please. Right, one more time. If it doesn't work, we will proceed. Still not working, so we will proceed, and if we can share this a little bit later, we will, I apologize. We have some other announcements that we want to share. On the nervous day, October the twenty-sixth, the Green Avenue Campus is hosting a college fair from six-thirty to eight o'clock P.M. Uh, we will have more than sixty post-secondary schools attending. You will see the list of the various colleges, uh, and universities who will be in attendance one night. So I encourage, uh, all of our families to please come out. Uh, you do not have to be a twelfth-grade student to come out and learn more about what opportunities are available. I would encourage families to come out sooner rather than later, so that you can start preparing for, uh, the transition. Also, would like to highlight for you on November the second, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, I am asking that our community please come out to the state of schools. This will be, um, an interactive session that we are hosting at the Pennwood High School, beginning at six o'clock P.M. And I think this will be a great opportunity for individuals to learn more about our school, and here we are, and its relationship to the district's current strategic plan. Next, as most of you know, um, we have opened our athletic complex, although there are still some construction items going on, but we will be having our athletic complex ribbon-cutting ceremony on November the sixteenth, as well as launching our community capital campaign. This will be an opportunity for us to share more information about the athletic complex, as well as updating individuals on our , uh, long-range school facilities, master plan, and capital dollars that are needed to move the plan forward. Those include, that concludes my comments for tonight. I thank you all very much for listening.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. B. Coles. Uh, so next, going to our agenda item, we have an oath of office, um, for our ninth-grade student. Her name is Eli Marie Favor. So we will be honoring her, um, by, um, making sure she gets entered into our oath of, oath of office as our new ninth-grade student representative. So Eli, you're gonna stand up. And we're gonna go to the podium. Right here, we're gonna step up to the podium. People's press that right button. All right. So what you're gonna do is you're going to put your right hand on the book here, and then you're gonna hold your left hand up, and you're gonna repeat that for me. I, Eli Marie Favor.
Hi, Eli Marie Favor.
Deucalally affirm
Deucalally affirm.
That I will support obeying the pin.
That I will support obeying.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Of, um, of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with final.
And I will discharge my duties of my office with final.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Let's take down, take a picture of this favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Sisters with their family.
Yeah, with our family. Thank you. And Eli, what I need you to do is with the pin, I just would need you to sign this. And I'll, you know, yeah, I have a pin, yep. Oh, can I? Oh, you got one too? All right, there you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm happy to bring on another, um, student rep. It's very, really important that we have representation from our, our student body. So thank you very much for taking this honor and being a part of it. Um, don't take it lightly. It's, it's, it's very meaningful, you know, so thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Uh, we are, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. All those against? Hearing none? Um, can I get a motion to approve the business meeting of August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three? Um, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? All right, hearing none? All right, next, we're going to, can I get a, so we're just gonna go through the committee, yeah. A, um, commit, we're going right into our committee meeting of the holes from September eighteenth. Can I get a motion to approve the committee meeting of, uh, the holes from September eighteen? So moved. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
All those against? All right, hearing none. All right, now we get to the best part, of our remarks from our student reps. And first of all, it's so good seeing you guys. Welcome back. Don't kill us today. Don't kill us today, but, um, I already know you got your list ready. We're ready. Uh, so first of all, we're gonna go with Mohammed Ben Gora, our twelfth-grade, uh, student representative. Uh, welcome back, Mohammed, and let's hear some reports.
Uh, first off, good evening.
Good evening.
First off, I was, uh, wanted to talk about how, 'cause I remember during the candlelight, um, Brett Curry's wife was talking about how we should kinda like, try and like, leave a legacy from, kinda like, leave a mark for him, something for us to remember him by. So I was kinda thinking, once she said that, I kinda, I kinda thought, like, you know how we have the, um, the sports wear gears, like how we have the little, um, like the Pennwood merch and all that stuff, like, I think it's a part of the, um, athletic department. But I was thinking that we could kinda like, um, somehow, some way, like, kinda put like the number thirty-three somewhere on there, like, um, on that gear, 'cause I know we kinda do that, like, most of the kids, we kinda like, you know, um, quarter zips and hoodies, and since, like, the fall season's coming up, I feel like a lot of people will actually start to, you know, buy in and actually buy their sports gear, and that could probably, like, first of all, get more money in front of the school. And then, um, second off, um, I know this is highly gonna be like a, a big move, but E-hall passes. A lot of people are telling me like, oh, like, I can't use the bathroom. A lot of people are out, and all this other stuff, but I feel like, too, from what, when I was talking to the principal, he informed me that, you know, keep the E-hall pass, kinda kept a lot of kids outside, uh, outside the hallway and more so in the class, so I guess that's kind of a good adjustment. People are still trying to use the bathroom, so we kinda, it's kinda adjusting that new change. And then, um, the library, I felt like, when we started to add, um, couches and stuff like that, that was a good, um, helpful adjustment, you know, like, we had this whole, um, image or blueprint from last year, trying to like make a library an important, um, part of the media center, I would say. Uh, more so put into our school and kinda like use it, and I feel like soon as I, like, started, even though we haven't got ads yet, because I find, like, as, as far as entering and start that, we're still using it, we're still chatting to each other, and all that, other stuff, and I feel like that's very important also. And then, it's more so just adjusting to a new, um, the new bell schedule, 'cause you know, it's kinda hard not having a home on first thing in the morning. You know, as soon as you come to school, you will start the first period, you already starting assignment, so it was like, you know, I guess we'll all just, we have to kinda adjust to that and see how it is, 'cause, you know, it's a new school year, you can't use everything, I mean, able to be uncomfortable, so I guess that could be a big adjustment.
So you're adjusted to the new bell schedule. That's something, so that's not a concern. It's just, it's something you have to get used to, so that's new for you guys. Uh, the sports gear, you're asking for us to make sports gear with the number thirty-three on it, so kids can purchase it?
Uh, yeah, this is kinda like, 'cause, you know, Brett Curry, number very personally, I like leave that, that mark, I guess.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, with regard to the E-hall passes, can you explain that, 'cause we're not familiar with E-hall?
Okay, so I don't, I'm not sure. So basically, instead of, um, a hall pass, like a teacher writes you a hall pass, the app is called E-hall pass. So in order for you to leave the room, or be able to, you know, use the bathroom, you have to, um, you have to, um, say where you're coming from, the teacher, the place that you're coming from, where you're going, if it was a hall system for the bathroom or another teacher, and then your teacher can either, um, uh, uh, accept it or decline it, and then you can go, but you're only allowed for, out for a certain amount of hours. And depending on how many people are out for that, like, certain time of period, then sometimes it says you're, you're limited, or something like that, so it was like, sometimes people who use the bathroom, and people are having, uh, using the bathroom, so it's kinda hard to like, you know.
Okay. So what adjustment are you asking with that?
No, I, that was more so this, we have to kinda adjust.
Get used to it. Okay. All right, also, all right, let us know how that's going when we have our next meeting, that people are adjusting to it. That's good, because keeping traffic out the hallways, but I do understand the concern of using the restroom. Um, and then also, with regard to libraries, are adding couches?
Oh, yeah, they, they, they added some couches, so, you know, that's more comfortable.
So it's going well. Okay.
Well, around the area.
So more kids are visiting the media center now. Okay, that's awesome to hear. All right, are there any other things you would like to report?
Um, the new turf feels nice. Thank you.
From the football, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Um, how was it playing only for the first time?
Um, I feel like, well, in my personal experience, I feel like, like, as I'm seeing it, we're more like, you know, we're flying to the ball more, just 'cause, like you said, how early, like, you, like, you, like, feel good, you play good, so, you know, we have that new, we have a crowd, and I think the first game was like fifteen hundred people there, so it was like, you know, knowing that you have that support system, all the people came out, I know, I saw you and some other people. It makes you like, you know, feel like, you know, all these people are with us, you know, we're playing for actual, like, calls and reading, so, you know, yeah.
Well, that's good to hear. Continue to give us those reports back. Now, we got with some games, all right? It's getting cold. We gonna be out there. Um, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Ms., uh, Ms. J. Lo Wise, our eleventh grade. Hello and welcome back.
It's, it's, I'm so sorry. I just moved this entire table.
It's okay.
It's good to see you guys again. So most of like what I have to say really kinda piggyback off of what Mohammed said. So the thing about, um, the memorization of, uh, Mr. Brett Curry, I noticed that in like the gym, 'cause for, I play volleyball, so we're almost always in the gym, like, the little, like, tapestries for like, the different sports, and like, the year that they won Del Vow, I saw that there was another one for a coach that I'm going to assume passed away.
Yes, Coach Randall.
I was wondering if we could have maybe like a tapestry like that, put under it for Mr. Brett Curry, 'cause it would make sense. He was a really big, like, figure in our school district, not even just in our school district, just in the community in general.
Okay.
So I feel like having something like that in our school, it doesn't have to be like exactly in the gym, but like, I would say like in the gym, has like his number and loving memory of, thank you, for all that you've done for us, because he did a lot. I won't lie, he, he did a lot. So something like that to like really like memorialize him in our school, in our school district, for what he did for us.
Yep, we could work on that.
Mm-hmm. Another thing, I did test the E-hall pass with Ms. Pardini. It, I think it's like, it's, it's a new app, too, so it's like gimmicky. Like, sometimes it, like, if a student sends it to like a teacher, they won't get it right immediately. They have to refresh it. So I think it's more so, we just have to get used to how it is, because I tested it out with her. Some teachers, they won't get it at all until they close out that application and open it again, to see it. So I personally, I don't really mind the E-hall pass. It's actually a pretty good application. It keeps track of who went where at what time, and what time they got back.
Mm-hmm.
So I personally like it. I just would like if they could, maybe.
The connection was quicker.
Yeah, if the connection was quicker, they could like update it more to make sure like the.
Might be a Wi-Fi thing.
Yeah, it's also a Wi-Fi thing, but nothing we can really do about that. So stuff like that, and I have yet to see the softball field at Kerr Field.
Yes.
I'm waiting for, uh, the spring season, but I assume it's looking nice.
Yeah.
Haven't seen it yet, but I do really like the football field in the track field, because again, like you said, recruiters aren't really gonna wanna come to our school, especially with how the old field looked. Wasn't that pretty. It wasn't that nice. I won't lie.
You actually have a dugout now.
Is, yeah. We have a dugout now. So it's, it's, it feels better, because we're gonna be able to play better. We won't get, you know, clowned on by other schools for how our facilities look. Yeah, and injuries. You know, there aren't rocks on the field. There aren't rocks on the track field. When the track runners are running, they can actually run freely. So it's just stuff like that, that I'm grateful for.
Good to hear. That's good to hear. Thank you for that. Thank you. Um, are there any other questions, kind of concerns? All right, awesome. We'll, we'll work on that refresh for the E-pass and, uh, the tapestry. I'll talk to the athletic department about that with Dr. B. Coles. All right, next, more, Ms. Morgan Askew-Green. Welcome back, our tenth grader.
Thank you. I'm excited. I'm excited to be back. Um, I think so far, I think the, you know, the tenth graders were new, so we're adjusting to the building and all that stuff. Um, I think something that's a major concern is the metal detectors.
Mm-hmm.
I think some days it takes longer than usual to get through, and so, because first period is a class we start with, we're kind of losing time in first period.
Mm-hmm.
So the teachers are finding that to be a concern, and so the students, because a lot of them are coming late because of the buses, but even if they are on time, the line outside is really long.
Okay.
And so that's, they're losing time. Like, I take AP classes, so as soon as we get in class, we're learning, and so if you're late to class, you're missing time to study.
Okay.
Um, and then E-hall passes, again, I think it might just because the Wi-Fi is a little jittery, but I also think sometimes, like, it'll say, like, so many kids are in a hallway, so you don't get a chance to go to the bathroom, because it never shows you that kids are not in the hallway sometimes, so, yeah. Students are kinda frustrated about that, but other than that, I think we're just adjusting to the building, and everything is fine so far.
Awesome. Awesome.
I, I'm making a note, um, and I will share that information around about the safety, vice versa, with the principal. I know that there was a backup on day one, but it's my understanding from the school administration that that did improve, uh, it just decreased by thirty minutes. This morning, I know I was outside, but I was over here. I didn't see a line, so I will have that conversation with the school administration and ask them to follow up, and make sure that the students are included in discussions about that. So thank you for sharing. I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Nope, that was it.
All right, and our latest new member, Eli, ninth grade representing. Let's go. Do you have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Um, so the, last week, I met with, um, our principal, um, talked over some things. Everything's going well. Um, I talked about, like, um, just I had a previous, um, issue with this last year, too, in the middle school, where they would share information over the announcements, but it was going so fast that, like, not, like, like, talking fast, but I just, really hard to write it all down for all the different activities. So I suggested for like sending out like an email newsletter with all the different activities or other information that students need to know, or just any other form of, uh, like, informing students
Okay.
of activities. Um, and also about, um, uh, backpacks being allowed or other bags, because of, now we have metal detectors, and it's really hard to fit the backpacks inside the lockers, 'cause they're so small. Um, so I was told that was, um, like, being allowed.
Okay. So the, the back, your backpack can't, can't fit in the locker now?
No, I, I mean, I can if I put it in the, like, uh, what's it called? Like, there's two different sections.
The top one?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're like. I think it's small. They're smaller now?
They should be.
They're, they're like, they're like this big.
There were small ones, too. I don't know myself, and there was a bunch of other students I heard talking about, like, 'cause, I mean, I guess it's just a difference from middle school, 'cause they had bigger lockers.
Gotcha. Remember those times? So you have to adjust to the size of the locker there. Got you. Okay. All right. Um, any other comments, questions, or concerns?
No, that's.
All right. Thank you very much from our student reps. All right, um, now we're gonna go to our, um, special awards, which are HESBA awards, and we do have a special award recognition tonight. Dr. B. Coles, stand on up.
Good evening, again. This evening, if you wanna highlight one of our board members, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, uh, the contact your district. I would like to ask Mr. Wright, if he's come up, please. I will read the certificate that the Pennsylvania School Board Association provided. It says, "The government board of the Pennsylvania School Board Association proudly presents a certificate of appreciation to Robert Gray, with the school district and red, the red mission of ongoing school board service and long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and value to the guidance of youth and public education, and the Commonwealth." Pennsylvania signed, gave a shot, like, twenty twenty, PSB president, and making it humane, PSB A chief, Zedlocke. So congratulations, Mr. Wright.
Congratulations, the right sixteen years and counties.
Thank you. But we'll be fifteen more.
All right. Thank you, Dr. B. Coles. All right, thank you, Dr. Bico, it's ready. Now we would like to go to, uh, public comments, uh, on agenda items. So what we'll do is, is that if you have any public comments on the agenda items, we ask that you come to the podium, state where your, your first and last name, and where you're from. We'll go to, in public first, any comments for agenda items. Yes, Miss Favor, you will step to the podium, state your name, the area you represent, and uh, please make sure your mic is on, it should be green, and you're good to go.
Uh, really, favor, I'm in resident in Landtown, two children in the district. Um, this is just a comment, actually. I want to thank the policy committee, for spending most of its meeting on, um, the issue around the playground and, uh, recess time at the elementary school levels, and adding that and rewriting the policy for the district. So I appreciate that you took time to listen to us parents and, uh, to hear what we had said.
Oh, thank you very much, yes, that's good. Thank you, thank you so much. Um, any other parent? Yes, sir? Yeah, you have the floor.
Thanks, uh, Ryan Backey, uh, proud parent of the new kindergarten at our local school. Um, I'm gonna go with what Miss Favor said. Um, I came to talk about recess, I'm so happy to see it's an established minimum. But particularly that physical activity shall not be withheld for punishment, doesn't align with all research and evidence on that topic. Um, I would know twenty minutes, even more would be better, but thank you for establishing minimum, that's what I wanted to see, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, um, um, Mr. Riley. All right, is there any other, no, there's no, no more comments in the public? Is there anything online, anyone see any hands raised? All right, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we will go to our board communications, but there are, there are no board communications, right, Mr. Paulson? All right, thank you, Savet. Now we're gonna go right to our committee, uh, report. All right, in our first, uh, community relations, uh, committee agenda, it's gonna be read by our chair, uh, Ms. Luella Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. Community relations, the committee agenda. We just have one item this evening. Next, A one, ten, with a high school annual college fair, I think we heard that in your reading, oh, yes. It's on Thursday, October twenty sixth. From six thirty to eight o'clock, it will be held at McTennell, the ninth school council department will host this event. And we would have representatives from, uh, the rise of college, universities, trade schools, and, branches of the United States armed service. The college fair is open to all public, private, charter, parochial schools, and homeschool students and their parents, and we don't want to go with this.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Um, there are no, there's no motions here. Are there any common questions or concern, board members from Ms. Luella's, um, agenda? No, hearing none, seeing none. All right, just wanted to tell people to please, please go, uh, parents, please sign your kids up for the, uh, college fairs, very, very important, please attend. Uh, we want our kids to excel. And, uh, any help you may need, please talk to our, uh, guidance counselors as well. Um, next, we will go to our education committee agenda, read by our chair, Ms. Valerie Cook-Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Education committee agenda, B one, out-of-state field trip. And there's a recommended action, and the motion is to approve the Penwood Middle, and High School Theater Club Student Field Trip to Broadway in New York on November first, two thousand twenty-three. And it reads, uh, further, Ms. Cox, and Mr. Chacano, principals of the Penwood Middle and High School respectively, request permission for forty-three students and four adults to visit Broadway in New York, on November first, two thousand twenty-three. The Middle and High School Theater Club will be seeing, Little Shop of Horrors at the West Side Theater located at four oh seven West Forty-third Street, New York, New York. This trip will provide students with an opportunity to travel to New York City, to attend a live Broadway show to watch a professional production. And the cost is one hundred and thirty-five dollars per student and adult chaperone. B two, release and settlement agreement, and the motion is to approve the release and settlement, agreement negotiated between the Penwood Middle School, um, the, I'm sorry, the William Penn School District and the parents of students as indicated. And it's, uh, three students, and the motion is, for the district and the parent of the following students involved, involving a disputes, which arose regarding the school district provision of free and appropriate public education.
Awesome, thank you very much. Um, can I get a, a motion to be approved, I mean, the second, please, I'm sorry, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any comments, questions, or concerns?
Ms. Perkins, I will be understanding on, uh, C and, um, Ms. Bridges, as I was not afforded, some answers to some questions.
We're not, we're on B, we're on the. Yes, no problem. Thank you for letting us know in advance. Um, I'm really happy they're going to Broadway, okay? Yeah, 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 this is awesome. I'm really excited. Everyone, please stay safe and, uh, have, enjoy yourself, Little Shop of Horrors. Remember that show, that show. Okay, so, um, can I get a, uh, all, all those in favor? All those against? All right, hearing none. Next, we're gonna go to our personnel committee agenda. I'm gonna read that from this, um, I agree, um, in her absence tonight. So we have C one, retirements. I want to say, uh, Ms. Teresa Melton, uh, she was a, a instructional assistant here at, Killaw High School for sixteen years. I want to say thank you very much for your years of service, uh, Ms. Melton, and we wish you the best in your retirement. Uh, C two is resignations. C three, we have appointments. C four, changes in assignment. C five, leaves of absences. C six, miscellaneous appointments. C seven, we have our mentors. C eight is our tenure awards. Uh, we don't have any at this time, it looks like our tenure award. Uh, C nine, salary track changes. There are no salary track changes at this time. C ten, miscellaneous personnel items. Uh, which there aren't, none at this time. C eleven, modification to previously approved items, there are none one. Well, yes, there are several on there, under, uh, professional staff support stat and additional, uh, duties type of needs. Um, C twelve additions, uh, to the agenda. Uh, and that concludes our report. Now I want to go to, I know, I've got it, I'm on it, C.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, yep, no problem. Uh, one second.
C three.
C three, okay.
A.
Okay, so first and foremost, board of directors, I want to, um, get a second. So, okay, and second, what I would like to do, Mr. Tomlin, is, um, we're going to approve, uh, the agenda, but we have to do a roll call, vote, we have to see three.
You don't, you don't need to do a roll.
I don't.
In fact, if, if the, you moved it.
Okay.
If you and Ms. Cook-Henry are okay, that the secretary, secretary will simply note an abstention on C A, C three A, then you can just call the rest of the agenda.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Tom. All those against? All right, and we got the C three, um, A, same, uh, vote from Jim Hall. All right, that would be, thank you for your help, we got it. All right, so next, we're gonna go to our property committee agenda, uh, read by our chair, Mr. Jan Tom.
Thank you, Madam President. We have D one, hot list for athletic complex. I'm gonna read that for tonight. As of Thursday, September twenty-first, the following items were outstanding to be complete. Men's bathroom, one privacy barrier between urinals needs to be installed. Third sink needs to be repaired. Number two, home team room, one privacy barrier needs to be installed between urinal and sink. Exhaust fan cover needs to be installed. Three, away team room, exhaust fan covers need to be installed. Four, P A system needs to be installed. Five, water fountain needs to be installed. Six, security cameras can only record locally at the moment. Number seven, wifi fiber, fiber line needs to be run into the site in order to enable internet and wifi. That concludes my report, uh, tonight, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tom. Can I get a second? Oh, no motion. Well, any comments, question, concerns? I would just like to say thank you for this hot list, uh, this lets us feel the progress of our complex and what things, uh, need to be done approaching our, um, eleven sixteen opening. I mean, cut, ribbon cutting, I believe it's eleven, it's eleven sixteen, ribbon cutting. All right, any other comments from the board over the hot list? All right, moving right along. We're gonna go to our E Budget and Finance Committee, read by our chair, Ms. Jennifer Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. E one, treasures report. E two, list of bills. E three, appointment of a primary agent, and alternate agent for DCIU joint purchasing board.
Um, at this time, can I get a second? All those in favor? Oh, any comments, questions, or concerns? Thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns, anybody? All right, here, you're seeing none. All those in favor? All those against? All right, here, you're seeing none. Next, we're gonna go to, and thank you. Next, we're gonna go to our policy committee, um, agenda, um, that is, gonna be read by, uh, myself, Ms. Hopkins. I don't think that's jumped online yet. Um, yes, I believe she had the word, so I'll read that for her. Um, F one is the first reading of policy two four six and two fifty-one. Uh, the motion is to approve the first reading of the William Penn School District, uh, policy two four six, school wellness, and two fifty-one, uh, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational, um, instabilities, and to enter such reading into the minutes. The first reading of policy is two forty-six and two fifty-one. Um, as required by district policy, the entrance of the policy into the minutes constitutes first reading, with the second reading and adoption to take place at the next board meeting. So, um, policy two forty-six, school wellness, it says the changes to this policy consist of the inclusion of a short phrase in the physical activity section, of the policy as noted, uh, below in blue lettering. Uh, physical activity, uh, district school shall strive to provide opportunities for developing, um, appropriate physical activity, during the school day for all students. Uh, what was added is, is age-appropriate physical a- um, activity opportunities, such as an outdoor indoor recess, tolling a fifteen, uh, a minimum of fifteen minutes, before and after school programs during lunch, clubs, and, um, intermurals, inter, inter-scholastic athletics, shall be provided to meet the needs and interests of all students, in addition to planned physical, um, education. Uh, then, um, we have, that's it, yeah, that's the only thing that is added for that one. Then we have policy two fifty-one, which is the students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instabilities. And those things are the, um, this will also be, um, going into second reading as well. So can I get, well, there's no motion here, right? Yes, it is. Can I get a second? Second, um, all comments, questions, or concerns? Here, you're seeing that, all those in favor? All those against? All right. Next, we are going to go to our solicitors report. Mr. Khan?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, just, uh, to reflect that the, board had an executive session tonight, immediately preceding tonight's meeting, to discuss a personnel issue, an update on the fair funding litigation, and potential social media litigation. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. Next, we're gonna have our reports. First report is gonna be from our Delaware County Community College, uh, by Mr. Wright, our representative.
All right, thank you. At, enrollment update by sponsoring school districts included below. The enrollment reflects student enrollment by school district for fall, twenty twenty-three, as well as dual enrollment by the district for fall twenty twenty-three, as of September the sixth, twenty twenty-three. Havreford Township School, three hundred and ten, Edinburgh, two hundred and sixty-four, Radnor, one hundred, Ridley School District, four hundred and sixty, Road Street Media, two hundred and eleven, Southeast Delco, three hundred and seventy-one, Springfield, two hundred and twenty-six, uh, Bedarby, one thousand two hundred and eighty, Wympin School District, four hundred and sixty-one, Chesterland School District, two hundred and eighty-six, Garden Valley School District, fifty-three, Waltham Swarthmore, thirty-three, total enrollment for, from the various districts, four thousand and fifty-five. Uh, the total dual enrollment by students by school district twenty twenty-three, uh, happened, I mean, was right, dual enrollment, Havreford Township School, eighteen, Edinburgh School District, sixteen, Radnor School District, three, Whitney School District, three hu- one hundred, Road Street Media, twenty-one, Southeast Deco, five, Springfield School District, thirteen, Upadarby School District, sixty, Wympin School District, fourteen, Chester School District, two, Garden Valley School District, four, and Wally Ford Swarthmore School District, zero, total two hundred and fifty-six. I saw, um, some of the representatives from Delaware County Community College about, uh, these numbers have been very low in the last ten, fifteen years since I've been involved, and so I plan to set up a meeting, with Delaware County School District, and also, it's okay, Dr. Bico, that I meet with our school principals, and see what kind of strategy that we can do to improve the numbers for the William Penn School District.
Yes, we can, um, arrange for that session to be held.
If you wanted to be involved, I think I would be greeted to be included.
Okay, I just had a question. The number that you mentioned for four hundred and sixty-one, the first number that you mentioned, that was the enrollment report for just what, our?
Wympin School District.
No, but you, one was dual enrollment and one was.
No, this one was, the last one was dual enrollment, the first one was just, you know, student enrollment for the spring.
Student enrollment for the spring, got you. Okay, so that was student enrollment for the spring. So this year for dual enrollment, we only have fourteen students.
That's correct.
Okay, and our numbers last year was around the same?
No, they were hired.
They were hired, that's why, okay, so I wanted to know the difference, okay. All right.
All right, the new southeast campus, the new southeast campus project is underway. And we had phase of the demolition already in progress, several of the buildings have already been removed. We expect this phase to continue until mid-October. The next phase of construction schedule anticipates to start in late December with two times, line to completion. The college is also working with active hospital next door, Martina医院, to help the students and staff, in a safe during all phases of the work. Uh, next would be, you know, the new campus building. Camp, the new camp, uh, the next of the new campus building, community campaign advancement office update. As was previously reported, college is in the process of transforming the former Archbishop Hospital, Penninghurst Hospital, into a new full-service campus, that would feature educational training, programs, and high priority occupations, such as early childhood education, healthcare, advanced manufacturing, by medical technology, skilled trades, and other emergency career field. Uh, one area that I know that we did well years ago, I'm glad it's coming back, is high-tech manufacturing. Several of our students will, several of our students during that time, wound up getting a scholarship at Dexter University, so I'm glad that, that program is, is coming back and we want to participate. The new, the new campus will be supported by part by the building campaign, fundraising campaign. We are pleased to report, that a campaign plan continues to progress with several substantial commitments to named spaces across the new campus already secured. We host a groundbreaking ceremony just past May, commemorating the former launch of construction for the new campus. We have raised, approximately fifty-five percent of our campaigning goals, and we are on track to rebuild prior to the reopening of the campus. Additionally, the education foundation has awarded more than five hundred thousand dollars in scholarship funding, already in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four academic year, including fifty-five thousand in recruitment and scholarship, that were offered to incoming first year students. Uh, finally, the sponsoring school district's school board appreciation dinner. On October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the college will behold its annual sponsoring school district, board appreciation, and the dinner will be held at the Marco Campus at six P M, with the ladies' house committee meeting, immediately following the dinner. That's using my favorite that I have to say while everybody else leave. And, and we should receive an electronic invitation would be sent out next week.
We actually received that, board of directors, so please make sure I've already responded a few other. We actually received that order director, so please make sure I've already responded, a few others have responded as well. Um, please make sure that you support um, October twenty third appreciation dinner. As we know, twenty fifth, thank you very much. Uh, as you know, the uh, the D C C does have a new president that we need to get ourselves acclimated with. So I'm asking the board directors could please respond to that email, say if you're gonna go or not. Um, so we all can be on one accord at that meeting and represent well. Um, also, I wanna add, I want to just suggest something, um, Ms. Val. If it's possible that you could work with um, Mr. Wright on the dual enrollment since uh, with regard to chair of education. If you guys could put your heads together to figure out what we can do to increase our numbers for dual enrollment. I just asked Dr. Beaco about requirements, so he'll be able to send that out to us, so we can work as a team to try to bring more students into dual enrollment. All right.
That would be great.
Thank you. Uh, does that conclude your report?
Uh, I'd just like to add, I'm glad you mentioned, I met privately with a new president of Delaware County Community College. Firstly, Tina, that became the president of Delaware County Community, Dr. Black, was the first African American male, female. So we continue, keep making history, and I'm just very excited about her. She continued to continue to work on new projects that Dr. Black left. And also, the old projects of like articulation programs, a great program for student transfer from Delaware County Community College to afford uh, service or colleges, university, M B C scholarships, so I'm glad that's coming back. And uh, I'm just excited, so I'm pretty sure when you meet her, you'll be just as excited as I am.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Wright, for that information. All right, next we'll uh, uh, well, Ms. Hopkins is not here, so we don't have any uh, reports from our DCIU, so expect a report uh, next month from her. Uh, next we will go to our Delaware County Legislative uh Council Report read by uh, Ms. Jennifer Hall.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Boykins. I, we met on September thirteenth. It was good to get back to action. Uh, we talked about basic education funding. Um, if the audience is aware, uh, Pennsylvania has started a Basic Education Funding Commission. Uh, their website is by the same name, Basic Education Funding Commission. And they're going throughout the state and uh, hearing various voices about uh, our education lawsuit, funding lawsuit. So I, you know, call up those videos if you can find them and uh, see what's going on. Hopefully, uh, they issue a report before the end of the year. And we can um move this funding case on. Um, there's lots of uh, interesting, we're putting quotes, uh, bills hanging around Harrisburg these days. Um, uh, helping our students achieve by creating student mental health days is one. Reducing the risk of skin cancer and excessive UV exposure in children, uh charter school enrollment cabs. Um, school free play recess and lunch period. I, um interdisciplinary records studying cardiac arrest screenings. Uh, promoting access to advanced placement courses. Full day kindergarten where they would legislate full day kindergarten throughout the entire state. Um, so lots of fun. Um, let's say interesting stuff. Uh, some may see the light of day, some may never see the light of day. Uh, we'll know more with October depression, but really, uh, the first thing on their agenda is to um, deal with the rest of the uh, state budget. Um, which was not uh completed uh, all the way in uh, end of July. So that's all um, all that, I'm sure we'll get much more interesting as we go.
Well, thank you very much. Sounds like you're a little busy. Yeah, so thank you for that. Um, are there any, there's, there's no old business, okay? So we're gonna move along, there's new business though. So in our new business, uh, Pespa Leadership Conference is coming up. And um, we have Ms. Hoff, she's going to be going to the leadership conference and also Ms. Ivory and myself. Um, so my schedule, I'm now available for it. So um, the motion is to approve me and Ms. Ivory to be added to um, the school board of directors um, to attend the twenty twenty three leadership conference one after October fifteenth through seventeenth um, at the Kalahari Resorts and Convention, uh Conventions in the Poconos. Um, so we're asking uh, you know, permission from the board uh, to be added to attendance leadership conference uh, with Ms. Hoff as well. Um, so can I get a uh, second?
So moved.
What, how do you want me to do it?
Since, since this one's directly for you.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, he has a second. All those in favor? Thank you. All those against? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, um, now, we're coming to public comments for non-agenda items. So if there's anybody um, in the audience that has a public comment on a non-agenda item, we ask that you walk up to the podium, state your first name, last name, and the area you represent. Ms. Babe, come on up, yeah? Feel like the price is right.
Hello again, uh, Marie Louise Faber, Lansdowne resident, I have two children in the district. Uh, I just wanted to give two shoutouts to the buildings we're currently have students in. One is to Ms. Smith, who was joined us at Ardmore Avenue uh, for coming in at the beginning of the summer and working very hard all summer to get things organized. Uh, I don't think she's taken a breath herself since she walked into the building. So thank you to her and to all the staff in the building. Um, for a good start to the school year. Uh, we're new to the ninth grade academy. Thank you to Mr. Curry for creating a very pleasant atmosphere at the ninth grade, um, as the students are getting ready for that high school environment. Um, so again, yeah, we had the teachers, back to school night was pretty busy. Um, not both buildings, not as well as I'd like to attend, so parents out there, you know, yeah, again, get involved in your home schools. I can't say that enough. Um, two issues to bring, uh, one was already mentioned, the busing definitely. Uh, the bus from Lansdowne to the ninth grade is about fifteen to twenty minutes late. Um, consistently, I'm already looking ahead into winter months. That's a long time for students to be standing there. It's probably longer, right? We're not, we're dropping off a few minutes or five, ten minutes early. Make sure they catch the bus if it's actually on time. Um, but that's maybe half an hour of students standing out in the cold, that's not.
What uh, which bus number is that?
Um, this is seven oh three. Um, the pickup is Windermere and Essex.
Okay, thank you.
But I've definitely heard from other parents as well, and I know there's an issue with busing for non-different students as well, where buses just don't show up. Um, and again, I realize there's a problem with drivers out, that there's no staffing for the buses, but um, there's the communication doesn't seem to be effective.
Okay.
Uh, we won the, we, we had one battle with um, you know, the recess time. Uh, my next one, I think for this year, I'm thinking is the bathrooms in the district.
Okay.
Uh, specifically the middle school, which is the one that most people are familiar with, and they are worse than any porta potty center city bathroom I've ever seen. They are, I spoke into some of you here about it. Um, I was asked, what, what are things that we need for our students that were on the list? And I got a very puzzled look from the other side. We need, uh, you had mentioned, you know, our students feel best if they have good structures to walk into. Um, there's really, there's actually no reason our students can't have nice bathrooms that are clean, where the toilets work, you know, especially the girls.
Are you referring to the middle school or ninth grade academy?
I'm referring to the middle school. I only was in one bathroom in the ninth grade.
Okay.
Building so far that looked very nice and immaculate.
Okay.
I don't think the other ones were open, so I haven't done my way through the pool yet.
Okay.
But definitely, I mean, the middle school bathrooms, I, as a, an adult and a parent, I'm directed to the staff bathrooms. Don't, you know, not to use the student bathrooms, which I don't understand that comment. But how am I better than the students that belong in the building? Um, so we really need to pay attention to make sure.
So toilets weren't working and weren't cleanly?
They weren't working, they were, I mean, you would lose your dinner if you saw the safety bathroom. Um, and then my last comment is just another plug for science fairs across the district. We're gonna have our third annual science fair this year at Ardmore Avenue. If anyone would like guidance on how to get that started in rebuilding in any of the elementary schools. I wasn't trying to push it up at the higher schools um, to bring that back. Um, I'm welcome to talk with anyone who's who wants to.
And would they, would that uh, the science fair?
We have a pick one, it's usually come in May.
Okay, got you. Okay. No, I was um, well, I guess my question, go ahead. No, you go, I'll go after you.
Thank you so much for bringing up the issue about the bathrooms at the middle school. Um, for the last year, that has been an area that I have specifically um, been wanting to get addressed by um, our contract service provider, who is Airmark. Um, one of the things we did do for our contract, we did Okay, we did, we did make sure that in our contract, we have a provision for when standards are not met that we get, if you will, discounts or money back because we're paying them for service and the expectation that they deliver. Um, we also have a, a process in place where I believe it's every other month, either quarterly. There will be a check in for, for things that weren't done and um, issues that we have. And so um, I appreciate you sharing it because this helps us and can utilize this as evidence of things that are not working. So it's great when things are working, but when they're not, especially with the bathroom, I definitely um, have issues with that. One of the things I always say is that if your bathroom doesn't smell this way at home, it should not smell this way in our schools. And so I do appreciate you bringing that up, and we will be following up on that with um, with Airmark, and I'm glad Mr. Deeds as well as Mr. Coffin are here, so that they can hear the same comments, um, because that's where um, the work falls under operation. So thank you for sharing that. And um, I will make sure that we also share with our Middlewood High School principal information about the science fair. I know you've been advocating for that for about two years now.
I have, you, you got me a few more years, so I'm always up.
No problem.
Um. We got, we got the information for the buzz. Um, I just wanted to ask Ms. Faber, are you, uh, when you're going for the science fair, like, are you reaching out to um, other teachers like at the high school and middle school to try to get them to say, like, to bring them on or first come to yours so they can see how it's set up? Like, is there anything, I mean, the reason why I'm saying is, I'm a scientist and I, I would love to help in some type of way. But what is it that, how do we get it at the high school, get science teachers to be um, to wanna be involved in?
Right, so I, there was one definitely at the middle school.
Okay.
I thought there was one at the high school, but I was not that far as the pre uh, COVID to remember that.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy to lend whatever expertise or time I can offer. So at the, at Ardmore Avenue, I help organize um, put a flyer out to all the uh, fourth, fifth and sixth grade families um, to look for interest. Uh, I will, I have a planning meeting with the parents, so they know there's a great website. Um, Science Buddies, I think, uh, that has lots of different experiments that you can search for by class, by grade level, by interest uh, for all eight to twelve grades. Uh, so that's right there. And then, sort of, the experiments have to be done at home, because we don't have the capacity.
And then they bring it in.
Do it in, yeah, and then they bring the results in.
Okay.
Uh, again, at Ardmore, I, in the spring, I have a few after-school sessions to help the students put together their display poster with their results, and sort of we talk about, you know, what goes on the poster. Uh, we try to pack this, they're like five-minute spiel um, for the fair.
Okay.
Um, so I think it would be something similar.
All right.
Um, just the experiments get a little more intense.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll do, make sure, I'll, this year, I'll make sure I come to your science fair. We'll can just start from there, and then Dr. Beaco to do the rest, and try to get more people involved.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm here.
Okay. All right, no problem. Thank you very much. I, cause I noticed your second year, it's dating that. But I'm glad Ardmore is still having it, and you're keeping it going there, so that's a big thing. Uh, we have a hand raised, I believe, um, in the uh, chat. Uh, what's that person's name, Mr. Coffin? This is right. Oh, it's Ms. Wright, okay, yeah. Ms. Wright, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I uh, just wanted to apologize for giving this comment at this particular part for non-agenda items. I was in my car and I was on the way out of my car and I heard the wonderful news uh, about the special award, so that's why I'm coming in at this point. But uh, I just must say, uh, congratulations, 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 Mr. Wright for uh, serving for fifteen years as a school board director. Uh, I really appreciate your service. And we definitely thank you for your commitment, dedication and your love for our community. So I'm so proud of you and congratulations. And I also would like to thank the other board members for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright, and we echo the same. We echo the same sense of Mr. Wright. Sixteen years is a long time. I think you and Jen are tied now, so.
I got a couple of months.
My god. He's so competitive, he's telling you the everything.
Everything.
All right, so there are no more comments, I believe. Um, or, oh, yes, we do. Mr. Ryan, you're up, Mr. Ryan.
I didn't see it yet, sorry.
No problem.
Um, thanks again, Ryan Backy, forty-one Berkeley kindergarten at Ardmore Avenue. Um, so in kindergarten orientation, I guess I apologize if I'm just uninformed or not caught up. There was, there's an oak tree, we were told at orientation, one of the entrances was unsafe to use because the oak tree is unsafe. You can't pass under it, but now you apparently can, and I hadn't gotten any word why that status changed. But I also noticed there's actually way more of the tree over the Essex sidewalk than there is near the school. I guess I just seek clarity on what's up with the oak tree on the Essex Avenue side of Ardmore Tree School. Um, the other thing is we, we go past the intersection of Winter here in Essex Saturday morning. And it doesn't feel very safe to me. I think the benefit crossing guard. Um, and last, like, we had a lot of anxiety about starting kindergarten, our next kid didn't know if she was gonna like it. Um, happy to say, she comes home every day and says, I had a great day today. And I wanna shout out Mrs. Lawler, kindergarten teacher, she's absolutely amazing.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawler. Okay, so I'm gonna defer to our, oh, yes, um, yes, uh.
Uh, I'm Anna Gavin, I have three children at Ardmore.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to double check, um, if, I wanted to get a status update on the poorly functioning air conditioning at Ardmore. I think the last we heard from this neighborhood was sixty, sixty-five percent operating, something like that. We just, I know that it's it's gonna be ninety degrees, you know, it's gonna be ninety degrees, like, you know, later on in October, but it's often enough. I wanted to double check and see if that had been fixed, and if it wasn't fixed, um, if the HVAC contractor uh, had it.
Okay, so thank you very much, Ms. Gavin. Um, I'm gonna defer to my operations team. Uh, could you guys first address Mr. Ryan about the oak tree, and then we'll talk about the HVAC, the air conditioner?
Donald Dean's operations, so the oak tree that is presently covering that kindergarten entrance. The reason why we shut off the entrance, because as rural area, we had a dead brick stall um, sometime over the last school year. We had the arborists come out over the summer, so we just put our options in, they all, we wanted to try and save our trees. Uh, so we needed to go through a treatment program to try and treat the bacteria that's causing the infection of the tree as well as trim back all the debris that was causing it to be dangerous. All of that, the verb, or sets, the bridge number the second. Um, and then once we have it all cleared from our arborist, that's when we remove. Our arborists have now also, we are embarking the tree in Victoria, the entire district. To see where, where other places where we need to either save, where we can save trees or have to remove trees. And the tree that is on Essex is one of the trees that we are evaluating at this point. So that's the answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deeds. And then with regard to the air conditioner at Ardmore?
Yes, so the air conditioner at Ardmore, and there's where the air conditioner only that's, that's pretty sad. Um, you see, this is something that we have been doing for, for over a year. We have several different instances by which. Um you see, this is something that we have been doing for for over a year. We have several different initiatives by which we try to solve this. Both from a schematic perspective as well as a control perspective and the other ones that would. Um I just received approval to have a meeting with both. The control side of the, the control side of our air conditioning unit and the actual functional and mechanical side of our. In air conditioning unit, so we're gonna bring both of those parties together sometime next week. Figure out what our expenditures are in terms of getting it to its most operational capacity before we get back. So I don't have an answer for you yet, but prior to also beginning to. That that air conditioning, that relative air conditioning. This is both the challenges that are at Ardmore are specifically related to cooling towers. And which that school has six full hours, even right now, at present, three of them, three and a half of them are on our operation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deans. I'm gonna also refer to Dr. Beak's uh with regard to the um. The Windermere in Essex with regard to a crossing guard. I don't know if that's our issue or a municipal issue. Uh how do, how will we adjust or talk about that?
It's usually that we work in tandem with them, so we will work with our transportation unit as well as. With the um local jurisdiction.
Okay.
To see what can be done, but I do have a notification, Windex and Windermere, excuse me, in Essex.
And right, Essex and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's last break.
Yeah, alright, well. Yep, Ms. Richardson, you got the floor.
Uh you point, uh I say have a question, I think I did ask Ms. Deen about the roof of the. Tangle Middle School.
Yeah.
From my understanding, there's still a, is this problem there?
Yes, we uh.
Have the residential one and when it's gonna be fixed, and if you look at the outside of that roof. It looks like it's deteriorating day by day.
Yes, so I I I understand your concern. We were in there um this past weekend. Um and what I did was I did call Mr. Dees, and he was actually uh on call, he had, we we talked. Um could you let her know how we're moving forward with that, please?
So during our whole operations, um so at present, um as many of you are aware, we have significant and. Uh at this point, you're probably exhausted all of the challenge, all of the options we have for securing. Um the roof at um the middle street. Uh so at this present time, we are going to try and. Try and maintain the the grant, the area within the gym for any water that's coming in. But we are, myself and um my supervisor, as we are in the process of developing. Uh because of the, the uniqueness of how that roof is situated, um it provides a challenge to even get a firm estimate. Um so myself and Mr. Coffin will be developing our opinion to put it out there um to get it taken care of. And hopefully we can take our service.
Beautiful. Because that school is a holy place. And so you know the residents will see that and, you know, the first thing you can say. I mean, I'm not saying that, but you know, that's, that's what would be said, so.
And that's fully appreciated. I think, one of the things that we can highlight is some of the investment that we've been inside of that gym. Uh in terms of the the gym floor and other areas around it, but I, we do agree with you that the outside of the roof is something that's priorities plus. And everybody is also, I would assume, very soon.
Ms. Duella, I was, I was, I understand your frustration, okay? I was in there. And I called him immediately when I seen it because we just spent a lot of money getting that gym floor fixed. And we all know that that side was leaking before the gym floor was fixed. He's aware of it, you know, we exchanged some words, you know, but I I let him know, he's definitely, they're definitely gonna work on it.
You know, I just wanna have something to say to the, you know, residents who make questions.
Could you tell her what's, what is the next steps of where we would see some type of response?
So we, we are actually asking the, so we do have one roofing company that we use that does most of our maintenance for the district. Um they are going to try and give us one last option, securing the last sliver of, if you will. Of area that's giving us um water in that, in that roof, but the challenge with water, as everybody knows, is that. Once you're still at one place, it just finds another place. Um so we're going to try and secure that one place right now. Mitigate the water that's coming into other areas, and then again, just get an RPL.
So the issue is gonna be is, we will not gonna be able to get work done on that because we have to close the gym down. And they're gonna have to review the roof, so it's like, and that can't happen during school. So our, just to let everyone know, that's ultimately what's gonna have to happen is, we're gonna have to do a shutdown. So the roof can get fixed, which means our gym is not gonna be operable for some time. Because we have to get the roof fixed, but we can't do that while we're in operation now, so it's like a, a, it's a double-edged sword type of issue.
Thank you.
Um also for non-agenda, I I just wanna add, I did receive a complaint about bus seven oh four, can you add that? Yes, uh with regard to an extra added roof. Um so there are children that I guess are getting picked up or um. They're doing a pickup and then going to Newtown Square, and the kids are coming from, I guess, Delaware County Christian School. And what's happening is they're not getting home until five, five thirty or so. So it's just that they, so the issue is they have changed the route to bus seven oh four. Which now kids are getting home after five P M, which usually they get to their bus stop, I guess, around four forty-five.
I think we did receive that same um item, and that that is being looked into. I think the follow-up has been done, we'll be done tomorrow with that family.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you know, I'm just saying, I guess we're talking about the buses, seven oh five has not been out there at all. So now we're having to be picked up by bus seven oh two in the morning and then seven oh three after school.
Okay.
And we're always really cluttered in with other students on the bus, and sometimes we end up being late, and so that adds to.
Seven oh five, where's the pickup?
Um fourth and Main.
Fourth and Main.
Yeah.
And you're not getting picked up at all?
We are by seven oh two, but we have to wait longer, and then, so we have, they drop off the middle school first. And so sometimes that causes us to be late, and then we get picked up after school as well, we're in bus seven oh three, and so that causes us. To have a delayed time as well getting home.
Okay, so seven oh five just doesn't show up?
Not at all.
Okay. Alright, we have that in our news. Thank you very much for bringing that up, yes.
If I can add on to what Morgan said, because since we have our IDs for school now and it says our bus numbers. It, when we can't get on that specific bus number because that bus just doesn't show up after school. And we try to get on another bus, it's kinda like.
The bus drivers get in trouble.
It's, it's not, and it's not their fault because they're just doing their job. They were told, hey, everyone has a specific bus number. They have to get on that bus, so I understand it. It's just mildly annoying when you see, cuz I live in Darby. And about from here to where I live is about a forty, maybe fifty minute walk, depending on how it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It kinda sucks when you have to walk home after school because you couldn't get on a bus to go home because your bus happened to not show up.
Yes, that shouldn't be.
That happened to be too.
Mr. Dean, oh, go ahead, Mr. Dean.
If I may, so um so our, our district is not unique, our district is not um. Unique in the scale that we're having with with staffing and bus drivers. Um C D L, C D L drivers is a commodity nowadays, and they can afford themselves a life. Unfortunately, they afford themselves, unfortunately for us, they afford themselves a lot more higher salary than they. In certain, certain areas. Uh what we did do in the, and just recently, as early as today, we did last week, and we reinforced it today. Is that in the instance in which we have to double up on routes, we are asking drivers to do two things. Number one, take the sign from, let's say, seven oh five that should be coming. And put it in the same bus as I might agree. Now you understand that seven oh five is running seven oh three and seven oh five.
We know that, but the problem is a lot of bus drivers are being, are getting frustrated, and the kids are getting frustrated as well. Because now it's getting colder, so now we have to stand outside longer, and we're just saying it's a problem, but we understand.
Yeah, and we re- reiterated to bus drivers that we need to ensure that we are picking up students. Particularly since you have your ID, have your route numbers that are manifested through those routes. The last thing that I wanna say to, to you guys, as well as the board here, is that we have been working since last week along this week with the transportation department. To optimize routes based off of now that we know that we have some, some stops that are called divvy stops, as students are just not showing. So there are gonna be instances at which we are able to shorten routes. Um because we are stopping at places where students have hardly, no longer even in the district.
Got you.
So that's happening right now, so you understand your frustration. Trust me, myself and Mr. Coffin are working on this every day, daily. As much as we can, we will get this fixed, especially in chemistry.
Alright, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Deans for that. Oh, thank you for also speaking up and letting us know what's going on, and sorry for inconvenience.
No, it's all right, we were just, we were just worried because, you know, late time and all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that first period, you know what I'm saying?
I think Chris may be fine that the administration intends to work with you guys when you're late, but it's.
Yeah. Testing and stuff, like sometimes I get the rescheduled tests, so yeah, they're working with us, it's just kinda frustrating.
Okay, thank.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for that. That's really important information. Alright, so do we have any other non-agenda items? Anything online, guys? Alright, so I'm gonna announce, uh announce for the future meetings. Uh we have our personnel meeting on September twenty eighth at six thirty P M, which is a Thursday. So please come out and attend. Well, you don't have to come out, this one's in. And then we have our property committee meeting, uh which is October third, um six thirty P M. Um just a very. Okay, so I just, cuz I wanted to get some clarification, on October third, it is a very important meeting. Um as you, as you all know, we are looking to uh re- not rename or add an addition to Kerr with regard to naming. So um October third at six thirty P M, uh we will, that is on the agenda. So that's, we're not voting that day, we are talking about the renaming of Kerr Field. So um that is a Zoom meeting, it's not in person, but we want everyone to know um that that is on the agenda. For October third, cuz I've had a lot of questions about, you know, when Kerr is gonna be renamed, and we're gonna talk about it, that is the meeting, we're gonna talk about it. So please attend. Um October fifth, uh thir- which is a Thursday at six thirty P M, um is our policy committee meeting. Um we have our education committee meeting on October eleventh at six thirty P M. Um our next committee meeting of the holes is six thirty, six thirty P M, October sixteenth. And then our board business meeting um is October twenty-third. Um at six thirty P M here in the uh board meet, board room, and also our committee meeting of the whole is here too. And you can also uh be as soon as well. Um if that is it, that's it, I believe, we don't have any other. Alright, I wanna say thank you, everybody, for your time tonight, um and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Have a good night.